This conference will now be recorded.
It's Tuesday, October 11th. Start the roll call, Josh.
Sure thing. Mary Benton?
Here.
Lloyd Colston? Brandon Jellings? Ian Coon?
Here.
Kyle Lewis?
Here.
Cody Richardson?
Here.
Tom Wheatley?
Here, online.
I don't see a section here of the meeting, but it's...
Yeah, under considered agenda?
Okay.
What's missing is the declaration, is probably what you're looking for.
We don't need to do that because we don't have a public hearing.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up the public comments. Persons who wish to address the planning commission regarding items of which in India. Any presentation for any waste purpose only, no action. Certainly, public comments.
Just here to listen?
Okay.
They're here for David.
Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public comments?
Yes, motion to close comments.
Sure. I'll take that as a second. So now we want to set the agenda. Uh, anyone? I have the indeed, uh... Any colleagues make our last meeting's last meetings minutes or disagreements? Need a motion to set those in record then? A motion to publish last votes, meetings.
I'll make a motion.
Certainly. Approved in the meetings. All right. Last votes, meetings are approved. Now we'll move on to the comprehensive plan. Josh, would you like to... Get us started with that?
Sure thing. At the September meeting, we kind of talked about how we wanted to move forward with the plan. And one of the things that was kind of requested of me was to kind of put a synopsis of what was going to be in the plan. And in the 2013 plan, at the beginning of it, was an executive summary. And so what I chose to do is reuse that executive summary. I updated it to match kind of more what we're doing this cycle, explaining that this is a little bit different than the 2013 plan because it turned into more of just an update. And then, of course, I focused on how we changed our goals a little bit. And that's what I think, sort of explained that. And then I, there's a whole section there, I mean, the first page or so is that. There's a section on each chapter explaining kind of what their purpose is, why we're including the topics in the plan. And so that follows in the next couple pages. And there's a section specifically on future land use maps. That, that's in there because those are kind of like an addendum to the comprehensive plan and it just explains how they work. But in reality, they're part of chapter eight. So... Does anybody have any questions about that executive summary? First, what you all were looking for? My thinking is that I will present the executive summary at the public hearing. I may not read it word for word, that could get a little bit dull. But probably what I'll do is kind of summarize it, make a presentation that just kind of explains what we're doing.
Hit the highlight second.
And then just open it up for questions after that.
Good.
So if nobody has any big major concerns about that, what I wanted to do today was focus on...
Well, I would recommend that the planning commissioners take this all and reexamine your due diligence, digest, take any notes, comment.
That is a part of why we put together these binders. And for those that aren't here, I will make sure that they get them in the next week or so. That has all the chapters, including the ones we haven't gotten to yet, in their draft form. Obviously, we're not approving anything until we're ready to, probably in December. But since we didn't have a public hearing to deal with at this meeting, and since chapter seven is kind of a smaller topic, I thought we could probably cover two chapters tonight. And the only thing we're really going to focus on is the actions and goals that we're going to work on anyways. That's the only thing I'm going to focus on. If we do that, then in November, we can do, we can start on land use, which is the final chapters. In December, we can wrap all that up. We can go over any questions over all eight chapters. If at the end of the December meeting, the planning commission is pretty satisfied with where the plan is at, then that's when I recommend that we schedule a public hearing for January.
Okay.
That's kind of the... I kind of like this because it gives us a little bit more time in December where we can go over anything that, which just wasn't what I wanted in there, that sort of question, we can kind of go through.
It seems like a lot of time.
Yep.
Outside of the meeting, we should definitely take a little bit extra time.
I would strongly recommend.
Put here for... Representative of the public, which means this is a civil service. Part of that duty is to plan and understand. Any resolutions made between now, you know, between now and January? Be discussed about the next goal.
That's kind of what I think. Ideally, what will happen is assuming that we follow that schedule and we hold our public hearing in January, at the end of the hearing, everything is okay, and you, that's when you would vote for, I don't want to explain this, that's when you would vote for recommending approval to the city commission. And probably sometime in February, I don't know exactly how we'll schedule this, sometime I would have to present this plan to the city commission. Both. I want them to be able to have like a study section or something where they can ask the same sort of questions being asked here.
So the intent of the public hearing is to... Just for public comments or for input?
Yeah. Or whatever input people want to provide. It should be kind of similar to what we would deal with for rezoning. Just going to say, hey, this is the plan. We know it's a big document.
Speaking our forever.
And there's nothing saying that they can't speak again when they get to the city commission level. If they're still, they're not satisfied, something's not quite right. We'd as much speak.
I think we can already edit out from our public hearing.
I would not anticipate that. I don't know what that is. Let's see if I can fix something here. Get my mouse. There we go. That should have stopped that. Okay.
So I just want to check.
You're fine, you're fine.
So in January, we will do the public hearings. February, so we present the commission or...
That's when I plan to present it to them. I don't know exactly when it will go to them for approval, but we're always... I kind of want them to be my guide there, just like I kind of let you guys be my guide at this stage. So if they, if they have that meeting and, oh my goodness, we want to sit on this for a little bit. I'm not going to hurt you guys. But my goal would be to have the thing updated.
Sounds good to me. We've got some hard dates.
Yeah, that's what I'm speaking for, I'm saying. I know you all are probably ready to move on to different things.
It's a big thing, it's a big deal, Josh.
Most, you'll still have to go. So let's go to chapter six. This has been this chapter that we've been talking about. It flows into the other chapters. Because it's probably the most important chapter we have. It's infrastructure. It's called infrastructure and transportation. Well, the only thing on the transportation side really is streets. And there's not a whole lot of talk of public transit, although I think there's some calls in there about that. And so what I did for chapter six that you haven't really seen since we had our meeting the last time for this, I did get the accomplishments updated, talked about the different things that we've done, like, like this plant was built that we're sitting in, since the last plant, so that was something. Working on the water treatment plant right now, the upgrades out there to try to make some of the federal mandates on that plant, so working on that. They also got a brand new administration building out there, so they have a little bit safer, safer place to work, have their offices in the lab. And then I put something in there about the Summit Street project. That's pretty much the main street project. We've had some other smaller ones, some mill and overlays that are related to KDOT, like Madison, I think, has been done during that period. Summit Street south of Madison to where the bypass comes in, that one too. So, so they're a little bit different kind of projects, but they were done. And since then, KDOT's actually resurfaced the bridge part of the, of the bypass. They, that's not a city project, that was totally on them. But they redid that from that intersection all the way back to Madison. So, we haven't driven it, it's nice. They did a good job there. And then I put something in there that we've, that the Public Services Department and Environmental have worked together to repair some streets. The Public Services Department has actually gotten pretty good at doing some of those base repair type things on small projects. So they've been working on some of our more problematic intersections that are drainage issues or maybe... Most recently, they've been working up Second and Hall Meadow, I think is where that section is that they're working on. So, working on it. Street projects, for instance, are really difficult to find funding for, so it's slow. That project on Summit Street, we worked on for five or six years to get that finally rolling. But, got it, got it done. So with that, what I did for these goals, it's just on the next page, 69, if you're looking at it in there in your copies. Both of what the goals and actions are are just copies from the old plan. And I just did that as, as a separate point. The priority on there doesn't necessarily reflect anything, that's just, it's just on the sheet. So, I mentioned general transportation, and so that's the first goal on there. In the 13 plan, there was a, an action that talked about forming a committee to study and measure community interest. I don't think that was ever done, I'm not aware of that. We do have the general transportation that's provided by the Department of Aging, I believe it is. And it's kind of a KDOT program too. But we don't have anything extensive, obviously, we don't have a bus line or anything like that. Without, without a committee to look into that, that's not going to happen. I can't for one say that we have a big need for anything further, but I couldn't be wrong. We could talk about it, but... Anybody have any comments on that, on public transportation?
Josh, I waited too deep into the woods to... Too deep in the weeds. Till I have a chance to go through it. Okay. Next two minutes. To, uh... Actually changes or... Revisions.
Another, another goal that we had in here was work on the creative cycles. Work on adopting a capital improvement schedule with dedicated funding. Here was to adopt a, adopt a schedule.
I think they need to mute themselves.
Adopt a schedule over 10 years. I did it.
The lights are swirly.
Something. So we have sort of a plan that's presented to the city commission each year that kind of has this rolling list of projects. And as part of that, what gets developed by staff is kind of a project information sheet. And it talks about what the, what the project is, what the, what the cost of the project is, maybe a little bit about where funding might come from for it. It does ask the question about whether it's in compliance with the comprehensive plan. How close those are, but it is a question that gets asked as part of that information sheet. And then, I think, well, I guess the only other thing is there's a summary of it. And if there's any exhibits needed, like a map or something like that, that's usually part. And then the city commission goes over that, all those information sheets at their budget retreat that they have to April, that when you guys kind of study over those.
Yes.
So they go over some of those sheets in April and kind of talk with the department heads about what, what the different projects are. Ideally, the projects are coming based on what's in this document. Of course, when it comes to stuff like transportation, we know what we need to do. Obviously, we have a number of streets that are in need of some serious repair. And most of the time, what it comes down to is funding. About actually that, but the idea of that capital improvement plan is to help prioritize the different projects that are going to be happening. And it gives the city commission the, the chance to choose those priorities. It does, it is kind of a dream plan, just, just like comprehensive plans. Probably the next two or three years of it are, are pretty realistic, pretty, pretty good, set in stone sort of projects. Anything more than that is just, we'll do it, we, we can get to it. But there is a plan in place, there is, there is a method to go through that and Public Services Department moves through that for streets. Since, well, we're focused on streets at this goal. The other item that we've been looking at a little bit is an inventory of our street and sidewalk conditions. So we just have like a database that talks about what that is. We've got a plan in place, working with some guys to go in the field and do a condition assessment of the streets. The sidewalks are a little bit different. The equal opportunity board had been working a little bit on sort of an assessment of sidewalks. Some of them were done.
Was that the school thing that they were going to do, the sidewalk in front of the school? Or down Radio Lane or something like that?
That's a separate thing.
Separate, okay, sorry.
The thing on Radio Lane, the FNA group at the high school was wanting a kind of a civic project. And they were proposing a sidewalk that runs along Radio Lane. We got into that, and some of it is doable, some of it, Radio Lane needs some work in order to properly have a sidewalk there. It definitely needs it, it's a, it's identified by not only that group, obviously, the high school, school district, police too. There's a lot of students that walk along Radio Lane. And it's somewhat of a safety thing for them, but fortunately, there is at least a shoulder there. But it needs improvements. So these are goals, you said these were goals carried over from 2013, honestly? For the most part, these are. So like the inventory street sidewalk conditions was written then? Not sure if that one truly came from that plan or if that was one I just kind of pulled out of there. Okay. I don't really remember. It had been written in there for 10 years and we just haven't done that, like, are we going to do it actually? There's a, there's a more concrete plan in place. We have GPS units that we're working with a couple of guys that are going to go around and make sure that everything is located like our... Little off topic here. They're focused on GPSing the, like water valves and vibrants and all that, make sure it's all in our system. But part of what they're going to do is while they're out in the field anyways, is look at the streets. You're, you're flushing hydrant or you're exercising a valve, you're going to be standing there for a few minutes anyways. Why not look at everything around you? And so there's, they're going to, we'll be working on that as well. Where they just kind of look for, look for issues with the street. We'll have a, we'll have some sort of a loop route that tells them how to rate it based on the different issues that are going on there. So it has a lot of potholes or something like that. So that one's, that one's going bad. There's a, there's a plan in place to make that. The only other action that was in that section, this was a carryover for sure, was finding a way to ensure that we have funding for street and possibly sidewalk maintenance. The only clear, dedicated source of funding that we have available to us is sales tax. We, we get some federal funds that we've used on some different projects, I think we used some. But we definitely used federal funds on the Summit Street project. KDOT has some funding that they passed through from the federal government to us. The other thing that we used to make that project happen was a CDVG grant, which is also a federal, federal funding. But so we, we use the federal funding as it comes, but federal funding doesn't go very far. Most of the time, most of the federal funding that we receive is, is used for the maintenance of the streets, you know, like potholes, doing the minor projects like what we're doing in intersections. But they are really just a supplement on the bigger projects. They help us with that, that kind of thing. So we would have to, as a city, come up with an alternate means. We did a street sales tax back in 2008, I believe it was. That's when improvements were made to West Kansas. 15th Street, that's when that was done between Kansas and Radio. I think there was improvements from that on Radio Lane. And then some of that funding that was left over was used up at Gotham Intermodal Park or Creekstone. Skyline was upgraded. Eighth Street, I think. I don't think that was part of the project. There were some improvements made to golf. Fortunately, on that project, KDOT attached some of that because they considered it economic development, enhancement to the economic development of that area. So we had a little bit of extra funding for that. And that's, I think, where some of the, like, streetlights and sidewalks and those kind of improvements come from. That's kind of the history of that. Some of that would have been done, some of that was after that plan. But a lot of those were actually done before. At the end of the day, sales tax is the only way that's a true, good way to deal with that. You might ask too, were you trying to say something?
Yeah, one of the city commissioners was adamant about going after low interest loans just for this reason, based on the amount of water main breaks. I just wondered, is there a local institution or we explored that at all as a means for funding?
As low, like, like low interest loans or bonds?
Yes.
There probably is going to have to be some of that. The nice thing about, well, and actually, funding would probably be done anyways because, even with sales tax, because all that money doesn't come in at once. So there probably would be some sort of loan or bond that we would use in order to go forward with that. I'm not familiar with discussion on specifically taking out low interest loans. But there's programs out there that assist with that. Problem is, that's just more debt. The city's taking off. So there's a, a list of projects. Do you know what the top couple items are on the list of projects and standings it's been talking about recently? I'm not super familiar with that plan, it's been a while since I have looked at it. But there's a lot of projects that have been kind of put off for years. First Street, from like central south of Madison is one that keeps getting pushed back. That's pretty rough. Kansas has kind of been on there redoing Kansas again because it's starting to have some issues. Then there's also some bridges that still need to be addressed. Some of our smaller bridges are on that list.
I have a question. So Colleen has a lot I'm getting towards here about details. Is that something that we want to get into on, on the comprehensive plan? Or can we maybe work those out after this went a little bit?
That's kind of my goal with this action here. And I don't, I don't know that you were necessarily saying that we need to do that. No, I'm just trying to understand, like... But yeah, that... Where's the money, like this one about possibly sales tax? What kind of projects are we doing? What funding do we have? Do we need sales tax? Is that really a goal we need? I don't know. I don't understand enough the details to say that that's a goal we need. We, there are a lot of the projects that are in the capital improvement plan do not have funding right now, which is why they get pushed to the next year, year after year after year. And you say a dedicated source, so you mean there's money there, a lot of times that may get stolen or something else because there's not a dedicated source. That's what I'm...
That's what I'm trying to
And even honestly, most of South Tax have a sunset period. So even those aren't a long term thing, I think you could do it for like ten years or something though. But if you have that, kind of like what we did in 2008 was, they, they set a period that the South Tax would be in place for. They figured out how much money would be raised over the course of, I think it was ten years. And both the projects are on that. So, okay, we have X millions of dollars that we can spend, we can find project A, project B, project C, project D.
I'm just wondering, is that, is that a goal we still want on there, are we actually gonna go try to you know, get say entries in sales tax for this, or is that just kind of like a topic of discussion we're not really gonna shoot for?
I think, I think, once we get to play it, it will kind of face to start working on details of how we do it. But we only need to improve the streets.
We have it on here as a short term goal, is that really a short term goal?
Or is it, should it be immediate, for instance?
Yeah, I don't think we're really that close to doing something like that.
We ask this, what, once we lock the set? Fluid document or can we have amendments?
The idea of the plan is to be fluid. So if we adopt it in spring, whenever it happens, and we get through the summer or whatever, and decide, man, this just isn't, this particular thing just isn't going to work, then we can draft amendments to this plan, there's nothing saying that we can't do it, in fact, we're supposed to do that. The statute says what we're supposed to do, we don't always do it, but it's supposed to happen every year. So the idea is, yes, it's supposed to be fluid. It should be adjusted as, as we come to it.
I would say that maybe on medium, like you said, that's not I guess, we, we talked in the past about what is the short, what is the medium, I forget what the timeframes are.
Those are meant to be a little on the abstract side, but short term, in the next few years, so this is a high, high priority thing. Medium, maybe we're just not quite ready for it, but we, we don't want to forget about it. So we want to put it in there as a medium. Long term is one of those things, we know that this is a dream project that we have. But we may be totally rewriting this plan before we get to it. But we want to put it into the plan because, again, we don't want to forget about it, we don't want to lose sight of it. So there isn't a whole lot in any of the chapters of the plan that we marked as long. It's, they're mostly short and medium. There is one on here that's marked as long.
I mean, I'm good either way, I mean, streets are, you know, pretty hot topic and something very noticeable by everybody, so.
That's kind of why that first action with the CIP, it's marked as medium. Just because, I don't know. We want to adopt the plan immediately, but we kind of already have it. But pushing, pushing through and actually doing it, I don't know, you could make an argument, argue all day back and forth whether that should be short or medium.
I mean, if it was adopted thirty two years ago, so.
Well, it's ongoing. It's been, that, that, that plan actually has been placed, it's just, it's just a rolling plan. As you do a project, it gets kicked off, you go to the next, next one.
So like a actual spreadsheet?
Yeah, it's not a, the, the way it's been done in the past is, it wasn't like one of those plans that you, you put out to the public and everybody looks at it. Now, they did have, for a few years there, they had a little committee that went over all of this, they didn't do that last year. They didn't do it for twenty two, any. Blame it on COVID, like we blame everything else. But that is kind of why it didn't happen for a couple of years, it kind of got in practice. But that's, basically this plan is tracked by the, what's his title? Our project manager, Nick Rizio, it used to be Mike Crandall, was kind of the keeper of that document. And that person is responsible for making sure that we're actually doing the project. Getting, getting none of these things checked off of that plan. Do we have that person in place? That does that work? So kind of moving forward to sort of our water side. For the thirteen plan, there was an action in there, one of the few that was actually something that was kind of measurable. I don't know that we're going to be able to make it, but the idea there was that by the year 2030, we wouldn't have any lines that were more than seventy five years old. Seventy five was just kind of a line, sand that was drawn at that time. Typically lines that are younger, if you will, that are less prone to breaking. Or less prone to having problems with dirty water. Typically, they're also not your, your cast iron, which is what usually causes the dirty water, the mess in the water. That were moved in forward to the newer technology, that's the third factor. But as you know, replacement of water lines is about as slow as replacing streets.
Are we, yeah, have we been replacing any?
They have been doing some, the most recent project was in the Bradmeek area and up like Highland Drive, that neighborhood. So a lot of that area has been fixed. There was also some that was done over in the Crestwood area. The problem over there is, we replaced the pipes, but we didn't fix the problem. And that's, they still have, they still have pressure. They still need a You know what? I messed up. I intended to bring a copy and I will get this to you, so I apologize. The city commission recently reviewed a master water plan. And they went over basically what, what our system is made up of. And as part of that process, they they kind of planned out, this is an engineering firm, I think it was PEC. They kind of planned out what would be the hot things that we have to address.
Set the water model.
Yes. Yes. Is that, is the document that resulted from all of that discussion? And it had, it had some plans, like it said, over in the Crestwood area or east of the Walnut River in general. Replacing some more lines. But water storage is the big problem out there. And the water storage, like in the form of a tower or something like that, is what they need to get back. Fire pressure, that they need to make sure that the fire hydrants are actually usable if they have a fire out there. When they had a fire, I don't remember when that was now, but there was a fire on East Chestnut, just a little past the bridge. Probably ten years ago, somewhere in there. And when they were fighting that fire, they did not have enough pressure from the hydrants that invited. So they had to bring in tanker trucks in order to put that fire out. And the house was lost. And maybe that wouldn't have helped, but it probably would have, they could have, they would have had to plug it there outside. So that's one of their big things, and they, they have problems out there. Do you have a, you, you have a? So there's no problems.
Yeah, there's a water, there's a problem out there, there's two hundred and seventy six houses without proper water support. So you got a simple kitchen fire, you're gonna lose the house.
Yep.
I mean. Was this part of the master water plan, when we talked about it last month, is that available?
It is, and I was trying to say that I intended to have that as part of the packet and
Gotcha.
Didn't it open there? But I will, I'll get it out to you hopefully the next day or so, I will get a copy of that, email it out to all of you. It's a public document, it was reviewed by the city commission, I think, so.
What's the source of fire?
A lot of that actually is coming from the water. So that, that's the difference between the streets and water sewer, is there's actually a system. Yeah, you've got a source. Now, sometimes that's still not enough and we have to do some additional bonding, stuff like that.
So you think that'll be about, or is it covered reports or pricing?
There is, I believe as part of that, there's also a rate study that's happening. That will kind of look at that, look at our budget based on that document and that probably means that rates have been up somewhere, but I mean, that's, we have to pay for it somehow. That's honestly probably one of the best ways to do it, is with user base. Because the more water you use, the more we pay. Now, there's been discussions with commercial users like Creekstone that uses about a third of our water every day, just by themselves, just that one customer. And so there are probably some difficult conversations that, that come out of that too. Some of our other large interests too, like another third, and then the residential is the last third, basically.
Pushback from these owners.
You know, I get it, it cuts into their bottom line, just, just like it cuts into our bottom line when it comes, when we pay our, mutually bottom line, so.
So the first goal there, replacing lines. So then I'm mixing seventy five years, again, is that something we're actually gonna do?
I think it's a good plan, I'm not sure how realistic it is at this point.
So we want that as a goal, it's really awesome.
At the very least, I think you're gonna have to change the year.
I mean, how many, how old are our lines, how many, what percentage of our lines are over seventy five years?
I believe that within that plan. I don't know the information on top of my head, it's really unrealistic to.
There's at least sixty miles, we pulled out one on, you're talking about water lines, right? We pulled out one on Madison, it was nineteen fourteen. Pulled out one on Eighth in Kansas, that was nineteen twenty two. So you're looking at, you'd have approximately between forty seven and sixty five miles of cast iron in the ground.
And that's most, that's year older stuff.
Cast iron is old.
Yeah.
Because the technology has moved beyond that. Now, what you're seeing is mostly PVC or similar products to PVC.
Right, and we have got patches upon patches upon patches on the cast iron. The last fifty three breaks that we had were cast iron breaks and all pressure.
Yeah, so that goal's kind of changed.
If we want it to be realistic, we probably do need to change the year on it. I don't know what that should be.
If there's no plan that we're replacing ten miles a year, we're not really working with that going.
It's a million dollars online.
So are we going to have a plan to do this number of miles per year and actually meet a goal, or is this goal just not the truth anyway?
I wish I had a positive answer for that.
I mean, do we just take the goal off and we're not really going to do this?
Maybe just take, take your offer there.
I guess, make all efforts to replace water lines or something like that.
Maybe it's more realistic to say that.
We can get, we, we can go by these individually and start setting.
I kind of like that idea. We, we kind of leave that in there, but to, because we want it to be a goal to get rid of these problems. Clearly. The city will be better off as a whole if we get rid of all of them.
My thoughts were like, things were, this is the problem.
So there's no water study, does it have goals in itself?
It does.
I'm wondering, refer to that document, does that have the detail for, we don't really have experience?
Do you know what maybe that was?
No.
Model identifies like the biggest problem there is.
I'm looking.
Looking for the means, because I can pull it up here.
Age of pipe or the material it's made of. It kind, I think it's a good place to find out where you should start.
Yeah, it's, it actually had its own goals.
I don't, I don't think it has any goals or something, I think it's just kind of like information. It's up to us to decide how to use that.
Replace cast iron.
But I haven't seen this, so I'm just assumptions.
Well, the very least, just instead of focusing on a specific year, say that that's a maybe it should be a long term goal.
I mean, our goal was to get rid of this.
Yeah.
Do we really know what we're gonna do it?
Is that, is that a special meeting, September twelve?
Um, I don't see. Yeah, I don't think that's, it's a no. Clear at the end.
We could have everything a long term goal and meet next year.
Ken, do you, do you remember when that was presented? When the water, that master water plan was presented to you?
Master water plan was presented three meetings. I think it's three meetings, so we've been the four meetings, but three in between. We just had October two and September must have been the end of August.
Pretty realistic.
But basically that master plan just says you need to replace the cast iron wires.
Yeah.
They have, they have recommendations.
It was information on the, the problem with the, the piping system, from my understanding from other towns as well as other, is that you can replace this pipe, which will now either take pressure away or add pressure to these two. And we're seeing big, long splits. The longest one, I think they had was fifty nine inches, that's huge for a water pipe. And they had to replace.
Excuse me. Ken, I just asked Ian, can't, something that big, just leave it, can we put a new sleeve inside that?
No, the zipper pressure thing tears both jagged and the guy said you can't really put one of those leaves down in there when it's jagged, it's gotta be smooth. So they just have to cut the whole piece out and put the, reset a new piece in, which means the piece that's cut out fifty nine inches or sixty inches is good pipe and you've got bad pipe on both ends. The piece that's cut out fifty-nine inches or sixty inches is good pipe and you've got bad pipe on both ends.
Oh, why?
Are, are all the lines under the streets? Are most of them?
Most of them are under the streets when they did. I think what they did, they did Highland, that was called Highland up there.
Yeah, Highland.
Yeah, when they did Highlands, they went over, away from the streets and into the east.
So if we replace a section, we probably don't actually.
You're going into the eastwards, yeah.
That way you're not tearing up the street.
Right. So I was kinda wondering about.
But the chances of the new pipe going down. You know. That's probably not gonna happen, but.
Well, they're a hundred years old.
Well, they're talking about when you put the new pipe in.
Right.
You know, and they're like, well, you can just go right back, cause now you're tearing up two things, tearing this up. But I don't know why we can't just leave it there, just abandon it.
Right.
Because of the, because of the compaction and stuff that's all around it, every time you undo all that.
Pretty common to abandon the place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I would say we're gonna redo the streets. Turn two birds.
Let's do all the streets, all the pipes.
Well, and you, you know, you come down to the streets and right off that curving line, what's happening on. Where the wet brown is on Third, you've got this. And that's because they pulled all those water dews out. Of all those houses that were there and now.
Left a void there.
So they did pull them out and then it settled.
It settled that.
Those are big water dews, it's big large cavities. It's wild. Those should have been filled with actual pipes in the ground. They're small enough that if they did collapse, you probably wouldn't notice. They're deep enough and there's.
But if you had gone through the back.
It's pretty common to leave abandoned water dews, sewage, place, it's just. Uh, it's not worth the expenditure, the effort. It's not worth the money. To end them out. If you end them out, might as well go back and put the new stuff in place.
The nice thing too about kind of following that is you can leave them in service while you're.
Yeah, that's after, that's, that's.
So that people don't lose water for days. At a time.
Yeah, usually when you redo piping or utilities. Build the new stuff right next to it. Shut it down and do the tie-ins.
Well, my cursory look for that didn't, didn't work. But like I said, I will. I will give it to you hopefully by the end of this week. Maybe tomorrow. The interesting thing about the couple of these other actions listed there, those are in that. But it's not planned. So it says like upgrade the East Pressure Zone Pump Station and add water tower. Pretty much more or less was.
Mentioned in two thousand thirteen, there you're saying?
No, in that master plan, that that. Now, yes, I believe that was also two thousand fifteen plan, it's just, it's still sitting on it.
And then implement the water master plan.
Yeah, that's just implementing that document.
But Kenny said it doesn't have recommendations over there, it's just informational.
Well, it says replace the water lines and. They don't really say where to start or. Kinda give vague suggestions.
So. Part of the mutation. For mutations. Knowing where it starts. About the project that size.
I'm part of that analyzing where the breaks were. Where we have flow problems, I think. And with that model that you were talking about, they have a better idea.
CI?
Did they verify that or? I think my point here is, is. What material the pipe is made out of, like sorry. Cast iron.
I think Rod has, they, they pretty much know. Where that new pipe is. The assumption is everything else is cast iron. There may be a little bit of clay left, but not much.
Zip and saw. They couldn't use a cast iron part, so. They went to ductile iron, which is a much better problem, ductile iron. I think what I'm getting at is there. I wouldn't wanna waste much time replacing pipes. In good condition, satisfactory condition. Absolutely. Just trying to focus the, the replacements on the, on the areas that are highest priority.
And that's kinda why Bradmeek, for example, was selected as an area because there was a lot of problems. We were trying to give a grant. To, to do it in sleep edition. Uh, but the grant has all sorts of requirements about income and how many people benefit from it. And just not enough benefit at sleep. So we tried it again in Bradmeek and there was similar technique. But we were able to finance that with our water fund up there. So it is possible to finance what we've got. But we'll keep going after grants till we can stretch it further. So we had a pretty good discussion on water, wastewater is a very similar situation. Again, the funding to replace it generally can come from the sewer user fees, so there is a dedicated funding there. There has not been a whole lot of sewer replacement. We've been, we've been talking about the downtown sewer replacement project for a number of years. It just had a lot of complications. Uh, AT&amp;T did a whole bunch of work in the downtown area that kinda slowed it down again. This past summer. But they're all done. And so I think that project is probably a goal soon as we. Soon as we get to. So that, that's probably the only action on there that's a very specific project. I believe so.
Yeah, I think when Rod filed, he would spoke, he mentioned.
They also did smoke testing of that several years ago. And some whole bunch of problems with storm drains going in. One of the things that came out of our discussion when Rod was here. And that's why this tool is in there about making sure they have enough staff. To do the things that they need to do. That's one of their biggest problems of wastewater is, is having enough people. What that are trained. That can actually. Do these repairs. But also his idea was to keep as many of these repairs in-house as possible, which. Should stretch our dollars. The idea.
That's questionable. Is there any kind of tracking of expenditures?
Yeah.
So that reports all that water repair costs.
That's part, when I go back to part of what Nick Vizio's duties are, is to make sure that gets tracked. Running spreadsheet basically of how all that stuff works. This mentions, there's still the goal in here to upgrade the wastewater plant. A lot of that is what's already going on. Some of that, I think there's still some of that nutrient removal that will kinda still be left on the. Partner to do, but a lot of that stuff is getting taken care of with the upgrades that are happening right now. And we could almost take that off in there. I don't know, I hate to take it off totally. Without being done, but. If we were wanting to, looking for things that we want to remove, that's probably one that could be removed without any issue, so.
We upgraded, probably go with regulations.
That's hopeful. I believe that's the idea, is most of the upgrades are doing right now are because of. Well, that's kinda what that next one is supposed to do, just make sure we're. Maintaining that compliance, so we don't get. The worst thing is we don't wanna get hit with one of those. Or the compliance orders or whatever they're called. Which can sometimes be fine, that all sorts of nasty stuff. From the EPA or wherever. But like water too, I don't know if there's a thing on here, but like water, there's. A rate study that kinda including that too. We talk about. Sanitation in this chapter. I was thinking that this chapter had something about our sanitation system in it, but I'm not seeing that in the chapter. I wonder where we covered that. Anyway. So stormwater. Um, one of our big things that we're having to focus on is simple education on stormwater. And we still have a lot of problems with people that are doing practices that. That hurt us. Um, one of those things involves like disposing yardways. When grass is mowed, it's blown into gutter, well. It rains, where does that go? Goes into the, the storm drain which clogs it up. Same thing with weeds. In the fall, we have those weeds. Have a lot of problems with people putting the weeds in the streets, so a lot of that is just simple education. Helping people understand that when you put it in there, it goes into the storm drain, which clogs the storm drain, which. Backs up the storm, drink in the streets and drink right quick. That's not even to talk about the pollution that results from stuff like that being there. Which we get. We get, uh. We have to track to, we have to track what. What goes into the river when it leaves the city. And we have to do regular testing of this water. To prove that we're not increasing the, the pollution to the river. As it turns out, what we found in our testing is that we actually kinda clean the water. It actually is cleaner when it leaves the city than it is when it arrives in the city. Because we, we're diluting it. So cleaning is probably the right word, but. That we're diluting the pollutants that are already in there. Uh, one of the other things that we looked at and we discussed when, when this topic came up. Was changing the, the fee structure for stormwater. Right now, it's, it's just a fixed fee. And we're not adequately capturing the. The fees that we should be for commercial. And so there's a, there's a fee study in place that the idea of make it a little more fair. Across the board, because. Creekstone, for example, is paying the same amount that one of our downtown businesses. Which. Probably isn't fair. So that'll have to be looked at, that's something that's ongoing. Another thing. Of course, we'll get, we can push back on any time you raise fees. Well, what'll come out of that particular fee study is a public education. Like a forum. Sort of thing where we can kinda have some talking points. That can be given to. Given to the public so they understand. Hopefully residential doesn't change. That would be the goal. They don't have to pay anything more. And the, the other one that was listed here was. Getting into that community rating system. Which we're working on. Not only helps with stormwater control, but reduces flood insurance premiums. Working on that, hopefully get that in place next spring as well. So that's why that's the initial. So that's really high level stuff. And as was discussed here. We don't wanna get too into the weeds. But is there anything that you feel that we just didn't address at all?
Trash services, that, should that be in this chapter?
I seem to think that we have that in this chapter in the last plan. It doesn't fit very nicely into any chapter. But this one probably makes the most sense.
I mean, we had something, I don't know. I'm just really, anywhere, it'll be somewhere. Reading the name of the rest of the chapter.
Was there anything we, you think we should focus on related to sanitation? Other than just making sure we have these trucks. That's probably part of why there's nothing on our. That system seems that. Especially with the change, you know, there's.
Was there any goals from the last conference?
Not thinking that there was really anything.
Yeah, maybe there's no goal, but at least on any, you kinda mentioned. There's a list paragraph about the city's. Services.
I'm wondering. I think there's a brief mention of it in. Uh, chapter two. When it talks about the city services.
Okay, so maybe it's there.
That's probably where I seen.
Well, there wasn't anything in two thousand thirteen in chapter six.
I see the paragraph titled municipal services.
It's just like a one sentence thing. It just says that we operate.
Oh, the service. Yeah, provides water, wastewater, sanitation services.
I'm pretty sure that's about the only place that will back.
Yeah, the others kinda go through all over the details. Yeah, the others kind of go through all over the details of. Issues, I don't know, maybe we don't need it, we have any goals.
And I don't know about, I love the Polycarts versus what we were doing before. That has worked really well, how people don't like it, of course, but.
Yeah.
I, I think it's been a positive change.
Yeah, they're really nice, it's kind of a pain that they're having front of their house or the backyard.
That's the only thing I.
But.
Don't like that. They're nice.
Does that improve the efficiency of the city?
I believe that does, it helps them out a little bit. Now they don't have to deal with the alleys, there's also less. Less backing that they have to do, they used to have to back down some alleys, which isn't very fine with a large trash truck.
There's a lot to it.
That too. We're ready to shift gears a little bit, talk about health. If you remember, we had a pretty extensive session. This was probably one of the best attended sessions that we had. Which isn't surprising because we were still kind of in the thick of the COVID pandemic when. We don't have. Heard a lot from health department in particular. And then we heard a little bit about our own health system too later. One of the things that came out of that though, we learned that, learned a little bit more about the. Federally qualified health center. That's trying to go in over to the former Lincoln School. They already have one of their clinics in Winfield, I forget where, and specifically put down where that was. They have one of those up there. But there's a system in place to get one down here, I don't know where they're at on that, last I knew the school district still own the property. Kind of work their stand size, but. We did hear from Dave Razzle, the director of that, but talked about it a bit. So one of the goals. Is to improve access to health services, the reason that they are wanting to do that is to deal with some of the low income.
That's, I know hospitals try to operate in black.
Shifting.
Shifting around, but even still, shoot out toward.
That's, that's kind of what their goal is, is to shift some of that burden away from the emergency room. So they're working on that, obviously our own South Central Kansas health system, whatever we're calling that. Is working on shifting their things around a little bit. To better serve the community as well. I don't know what their status is of the Winfield clinic, but last I heard that that was kind of, might even be closing that, moving their operations down here.
What, is that Winfield Medical Arts, they have closed?
I don't know, that depends how you look at it, my personal opinion, I kind of like it because it consolidates. Our system to our city. Just my opinion. But. I wasn't upset. When I heard about that closing. But at the same time, Winfield has a health system of their own. And we want to continue working alongside them to make sure that we get all the services that Calhoun County needs. Between the two different systems, so there is an action in there to continue. Working with William Newton and the health system up there. Let's see. Basic preventative care. You know, focus on that, again, that health center should help with that, kind of the idea. To get people that. Would not normally get, take care of their basic care, because they don't have insurance, to go to a place like that. We don't want to talk, get into the wormhole that Medicaid is, and probably this discussion, but there's some gaps. That still exist, even with Medicaid. So pretty much all of that is just short term, it's just. It's not a real action that even the city has to take, it's more about just. Keeping those connections. And encouraging where we can. To get things improved. Childcare is one thing that's specifically listed here too, that's. Still a big problem in our community. I believe that Creekstone is working on a plan to help alleviate some of that. But we'll see what, wouldn't that happen there, but they're actively working on efforts to. To have a childcare facility that's a large one, that helps with their. Employees at the very least, but we still have a need. For more childcare, there's, there's also talk through other smaller things that are just quite a lot of conversations. But. At the end of the day, some of it comes down to what it takes to get licensed, which is kind of why this is sort of the way it is. If we have to, we can lobby K D H E to. We want to keep the safety, but can you make it a little easier? To accomplish new ones. And this last one was something that kind of came up, I think, I think you guys kind of mentioned it. Was to make sure that when we consider variants, a rezone, a plat, whatever the base may be. That public health is in the discussion. So we, we make sure that when we approve a rezoning, for example, that that project takes that into account. Or it doesn't make the problem that worse. So. That's kind of on me to make sure that that happens, and I bring up that topic every time. But you don't have to make sure that we're doing that. Doesn't take a lot of. So I, I don't think that's a problem, I think we can make sure that we have it, that's a good thing to have in here. Doesn't cost any money or anything like that, which is kind of nice. But it also helps with the problem. The next sort of goal talks about sort of the mental health side of things. Our county has that four county mental health clinic. And I think some people don't even recognize that we have it, that we have that as an option. Don't disagree. And I think that when we heard from Dave Razzle about that clinic, that they may offer some of that. At that clinic too.
Yeah, I think mental health is a problem. Physical health. Did a pretty good job, but we totally. Lost our mental health system totally.
Well, there's still a stigma to it, people. I, I admit, I wouldn't want to admit that I was having depression or anxiety, we don't like to admit that.
Well, easily, people don't have, there's no beds available, so. There was a statistic back in the 1950s for every 100,000 people, there was 523 beds. Fast forward 50 years, so guess how many beds there are now per 100,000? Capital, 100,000, sorry. 23 beds available for every 100,000.
And nobody likes to fund those beds.
So as far, I, I think that's probably. The top priority for public health.
Increasing access to it.
Yeah, or making those services available here. We have one. So how many clinics do we have in our city?
Two, basically.
Two.
And then four county, of course.
Service. So I mean, we just have one. Facility to handle all the issues.
And as far as I know, they don't do inpatient there. So they, if, if inpatient services, you will be moved to federal county. That'd be the closest option.
Or they put with J O, which are worse than. The total issues.
Some of that is stuff that we can't control at this level, some of that is state and federal, but. Moves stuff around, but. It's a policy, some law changes that probably have to happen.
Well, we can encourage private, private industry to offer cities.
Well, and that, I don't know if you saw that, but that's one of those actions that is avoid inappropriate incarceration.
Yeah, I saw that. Where are they, where are they going to go, you have somebody that's a danger to themselves.
Yeah, not here. Now, you'd have to go to Central County, the Calm Care. Facility up there, that's the only choice around here. For inpatient. A good, positive thing that we do have in this community has to do with suicide prevention. Do have a group that's working on that. And they're getting into places like the schools where that starts. And talking to the kids, helping them understand that there's options available, people to talk to. I don't know why there's not an X on that.
If you wanted to go see it there, it was tomorrow, where, where would you, where would you go?
That's what you could do at four county. And they have, they have emergency services too. That they can be used as well. But again, not inpatient. They would have to refer. For inpatient services.
Well, if you're at the hospital and you have a mental health crisis, it can take between two hours and 24 hours for someone to come. From mental.
So there's still. A major problem with that, because our hospital isn't equipped to do that sort of thing. They do, they cope with it, but. So clearly, we, we are recognizing that mental health is a big issue, maybe even more so than access to basic health in this community. But there is a third goal that we talked about a little bit in here, and that's encourage wellness. Not just healthcare. And you do that through stuff that we talked about in chapter five. Make sure that we have places for people to go. So there's a very generic action of just. Following the actions from chapter five. So making sure that we have. Parks and, and make sure that the parks we have actually meet the needs of people. And as discussed in chapter five, if the parks aren't meeting the needs of people, we need to reevaluate that. Most of these though are just encouragement. Encourage other entities to, to do those things. Any other things we want to discuss about community health?
Like I said, I'd really like to just. Sit down, digest this. So that's in time before.
That's kind of my goal for December two, is to, after you've had a chance to just really thoroughly go through this plan, now that you have all of the chapters in front of you. Spend, spend that meeting making sure that everybody's happy with what's in there. Me too. So the only topic that we have to kind of do this final discussion on is land use, so that's what I was going to bring up next month. Talk about how. How we tie all this together, because land use is one of those topics that kind of puts everything together. And the future land use map is a big part of that, so I've been working on that. And I have some recommendations myself for that, and we can start that discussion next month.
So next month, we're going to go to. December two. Really, you know, final. Final draft, basically.
And if we get to December, then at that meeting, and we're just not feeling good, then. Let me push it off, I don't think we have to do that, but.
Yeah, I don't think we should push it off. I think we should. If we're not sure about stuff. We've already pushed it off over the years.
I agree.
We need to implement, but maybe if we want to come back on to the details a little bit. So. Just, let's just stick to the deadline, you know, January is a good deadline.
That's part of why I wanted to do these two together, so that we have just a little more flexibility in December.
As I said earlier, it's, it's commissioners to do. Quiet commissioners, these two, their two delegates, read through this. Take those, come to the next meeting, prepare. Input to be added to the final draft.
And please bring me back with you. Because then we, then you'll have it all in front of you and. I won't be afraid anymore, so. Yeah, that's, just planning to bring that back and.
Well, is there any, can you send a digital copy of other versions, word, you know, word copies?
Yeah, it was in the packet. It was part of the packet. Oh, you, oh, you're asking specifically for a word version, I can say that too.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I just don't like to put a word version.
I really can't.
A what? I can't really put that in a word version in the, a gin packet.
Yeah, I understand, that's why I asked for.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying that. That way you can take your own nose and. Anything else for the good of the group?
Is there, is there any other items that. They're online? There online, other items you wish to discuss?
I'll make emotionally adjourned.
I'll save that.
Okay. Bye, guys.